This regular meeting of the Savinno Park City Council to order. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Maggie immediately to be followed by the invocation led by Buddy. If you please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, as we enter Holy Week and the Easter weekend, please keep watch over our families and friends and let everything we do this coming Holy Week be inspired by you. I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. Make every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. This brings us to item number three, citizens to be heard. First speaker is Dale Bond. Dale, if you'd come forward, if you'd tell us where you live, and you will have three minutes, followed by Jeff Gault.
Hi, I'm Dale Bond. I live at 307 Savinno, Chavino Creek. At the last meeting, you considered the issue of our request to have assistance replacing our mailbox units. So I'm just here to follow up with a few follow-up comments on that. First of all, thank you for the consideration. We certainly appreciate that. Some things were mentioned last time that there were concerns that it might be providing a benefit to an individual or maybe a small number of individuals. I know it affects our community of about 250 homes. I know the estates have a similar issue with their mailboxes. At least they have the old mailbox units like we do. I don't know about their crime, but I know they have the similar units, but they also probably have about another 250 homes. So it's actually a fairly significant part of the population. I think there's also a concern, or it would be a concern to me, I have heard that the post office will replace the estates because they don't have an HOA. But it's also my understanding they only replace those if they are damaged beyond repair. Now, my personal unit has been broken into more than once, so they can be broken into and still be repaired. For one thing, sometimes they just bust the lock, and they can replace the lock. Other ways they're being broken into is the key that the post office uses is a nationwide key. They're all the same for these old units, and they are in circulation. So sometimes they just use the key. So I just want to add that, one, we know the new units are effective. We have some, and even though we have the issue in our neighborhood, none of the new units have been broken into. They are stronger, they're reinforced, they are bolted into the ground with bolts that are, like, have a proprietary key, and they all use a key that would be more similar to a house key. And that key is limited to an area. And so if that key is stolen from a postal carrier, they can change the locks in that area, as opposed to changing every lock nationwide. And so these are effective, and I just want to say that there's a lot of things we do to fight crime, but this one's proven effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Jeff? Your name and where you live.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Jeff Gault. I live at 303 Red Cedar. I'm serving as the Chair of the Homeowners Association Board for Chavino Creek. I just was informed that a letter that I addressed to the council last week hasn't been distributed, but it's going to be. So let me just summarize a few key points. What we're asking is for help, that we partner together, and specifically ask for 50% of the cost of replacing the old units that remain, which are about half of the total units in the neighborhood. In the document that shall be given, there is the quotes both for the equipment and for the cost of installing it. And it comes to about $27,400. So what we're specifically requesting is $13,700 from the city, and the HOA would provide the balance, would match that. As you are, I'm sure, aware, mail service is actually a constitutional right. Government is responsible for providing reliable mail service to all the citizens, including those in Chavino Park. Chavino Creek, although it has an HOA, it's very different than others in the community. We are not a gated community. The streets in Chavino Creek are owned by the city. The slabs on which the mailboxes are situated are on the city's right-of-way. The mailboxes themselves belong to the post office. And so, you know, it seems to me it's, they're clearly a public accommodation in order for the government to provide the services called for in the Constitution. Now, it's been mentioned that other homeowners have individual mailboxes which they purchase and provide, and we would love to be able to do that, but the post office will not let us do that. It is for their convenience that the community was required to use these clustered mailboxes, which are susceptible to being vandalized. And until recently, meaning about, I don't know, six months or so ago, the post office readily admitted that it was their responsibility to replace these units, and they did replace about half of them in Chavino Creek. And then, for some reason, that policy changed. So we're reaching out to you as elected representatives of our government. I know you're not the federal government, but to address a problem here in our community. So we appreciate your consideration of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Okay, this brings us to item four, city council comments. Buddy?
Welcome, everyone.
Maggie?
Hello, nice to see everyone.
You want to turn on your microphone?
No. Thank you. Nice to see everybody, and thank you for coming.
Conrad?
Same, good to see everyone. My apologies for being late.
Pete?
Yes, I'd also like to welcome everyone and make everyone aware of a restoration project that we have going on, so out in front of City Hall. If you notice our beloved mascot, which is being restored, and it is actually being restored by, and I want to mention his name, Brian St. John, and he's with the St. Mary's University, and he's helping, I think this is being commissioned by the Women's Organization of Chavino Park. So I just wanted to mention that, and his work is ongoing, and hopefully within the next few weeks, we'll see that completed.
Thank you. Lee?
Thank you for attending. Apologize for my voice. I just got it back yesterday. Yay pollen.
Well, thank you very much. I very rarely have any city council comments. I do want to recognize a great American whose birthday was March 22nd last Friday, and Pete Miller. Let's all give Pete a big round of applause. And I mean, you've already had your time.
I think it needs to be noted that the only way that I remember my birthday is that I remember the mayor's birthday.
Oh, Pete. Brings us to item number five, presentations, commendations, and announcements. A couple of proclamations that we issue on an annual basis come up every April. The first is Arbor Day. Arbor Day was first recognized in the United States in 1872 concerning the replenishment of tree populations because so many farmers and homesteaders had taken down so many trees. Chavino Park began recognizing Arbor Day somewhere around 2013, and we have done that year in and year out, and the community with friends of Chavino Park, as well as CPS and SAWs, have given out several thousand trees during that period of time. And it is a fun time for the community. It's also that time when we bring all of the children into Chavino Park from Blatman Elementary to hopefully celebrate some amazing artwork. Second proclamation concerns Autism Awareness Month, which is April. This is a spectrum disorder with a broad range of conditions, challenges from social skills, repetitive behavior, speech, and nonverbal communication. This is something that affects many more people than it did 60 years ago, and as a community and as a society, our hearts go out and our wallets are open to help. And on behalf of the City of Chavino Park and the City Council, we recognize the month of April as National Autism Awareness Month. Brings us to the third recognition, the third item, a recognition of Fire Captain Greg Woodruff on his graduation from the Police Academy. I'm going to turn this over to Chief Dover at this time. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. I'd like to recognize Captain Woodruff, who, on his own merit, attended the Fire, I'm sorry, the Police Academy, starting last year in May, 22nd last year, completing it and graduating on February the 27th of this year. This is something that Captain Woodruff saw a need, that we needed to fill. One of our former employees was also a fire marshal that assisted me as needed when that individual left the city, vacated that position, so this will assist me in my duties as fire marshal with the city. So Greg spent over 720 hours, class hours, in the academy, and he did all of this in the evenings on his own time while maintaining his duties here at the Fire Department. We shifted his schedule a bit. He was coming in early, leaving a little earlier to make it to the far south side to the Police Academy and taking care of that. So some of my duties as a department head or a director aren't as pleasant, but one of the things that I take great pride in is being able to recognize somebody for their efforts, and I'd like to bring Captain Woodruff up here now. Although he's technically been sworn into office, I'd like to swear him in briefly real quick, just in front of Council, and of course, if we can get a photo op as well. So Greg, if you'll raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, repeat after me, I, Gregory A. Woodruff, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Deputy Fire Marshal, of the State of Texas, the City of Chavino Park, and I will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. He is. So I actually swore Captain Woodruff then last week, I want to be able to do this with my counsel, and yes.
We appreciate it. Good job. Yes.
Good job, Greg.
This brings us to item number six, consent agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the end of the regular agenda items. Do we have a motion to accept and/or approve items 6.1 and 6.2?
移到
We have a motion from Maggie. We have a second from Pete. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. City managers report, all matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the City Council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincidently with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Any discussion will occur at the end of the regular agenda items. Does anybody want to pull any of items 7.1 through 7.6? There being no request, brings us to item number eight, regular agenda items, 8.1, discussion, action, review of water model analysis project proposal and approval of the way ahead. Bill, I'm going to recognize you and Thomas Turk.
Tom's not here.
Thomas isn't here.
Tom's not involved in this at all.
Okay, who is involved?
Okay, first slide.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to introduce John Baker.
John Baker.
And John is from the engineering firm, one of our on-call engineering firms. Let him introduce himself, tell them a little bit about him and his role and his partner, and then I'm going to kick off with the discussion.
Then I will recognize John.
Yeah.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens. My name is John Baker. I'm a licensed professional civil engineer. I'm a retired Army Colonel from the Corps of Engineers, and I serve as the regional principal for the firm Lockwood Andrews &amp; Newham, or LAN. We're a Texas-based civil engineering consulting firm. We just celebrated our 89th birthday, so we've been around for a long time, in San Antonio since 1979. With me tonight is Ms. Eliza Alvarez. She's also a licensed professional engineer and a certified floodplain manager here in the state of Texas. She serves as our municipal team leader covering the greater San Antonio area. We appreciate your giving our firm the opportunity to serve as an on-call engineer to help improve the infrastructure for the city of Chavino Park. We appreciate your consideration of the proposal, which you're going to see tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, Bill?
Okay, so you're all familiar with, a couple of you have been on the Water Advisory Committee, so you know, we have a challenge in terms of understanding what we have in our water model, how it runs, and our water system. As part of the comprehensive town plan, under the focus area of infrastructure, we obviously identified that we have aging water infrastructure, and we have a lack of situational awareness as to what actual, what we have and where it is and what size and what it may have been placed in there. But we, in the town plan, put as one of the action steps, conduct a comprehensive water hydrology model to anticipate future capital requirements. Now, if I asked you what you thought a water model is, I'd probably get six different answers. If you asked me three times, you'd probably get three different answers from me, having not actually seen one as it's been applied and actually looked at it and operated it. But I have learned a lot about it since we engaged with land engineering, and we started out thinking, and in your staff summary, I put some background and history on there, we thought, well, we're going to do this hydrology model because we want to be able to plan capital replacements. We want to be able to determine future water main size for future installations. We want to ascertain whether we want additional booster pumps. We want to improve the ISO rating and maybe determine other water capacity, storage capacities. Back up to the first slide. Okay, so given that is our going into understanding, we started engaging land and saying, okay, let's come up with a task order. And so the first thing they ask us is, what is it you want? And then it kind of rolled out to, well, we don't know what we want. We have this idea that we want a water model without knowing truly what a water model is. And so we went back and forth, and I said, no, don't give them anything, because they need to educate us and tell us what it is that is, what is, what is the menu of assets out there, and what are the different levels of planning and models that you can get, and what does it mean? And after frankly, a couple of weeks of back and forth in emails, John Baker said, well, why don't we host a, we call it a lunch and learn, where we'll come in with our team, our experts, and we'll kind of walk you through this. And they presented quite a comprehensive briefing, and in that, they walked through the whole thing. I think it was maybe after not even an hour and a half of discussion, I finally figured out kind of what they were talking about. Okay? So I'm dumbing it down a little bit, but I took a few slides from their briefing, and I put it in what I'm going to present here. And then in your attached packet, you have their full briefing that they had initially, that they, they've actually redacted some of the information which might be about a specific city or something like that, that, you know, those cities wouldn't want to be disclosed, so that you had some blank spots in there. But ultimately, what we figured out is, looking at this slide here, that in order to do a water model, you have to have an accurate GIS map. And actually, the map isn't just a map that shows you point locations and gives you readings and measurements. It has to be linked in so that it can, it can be a system, okay? So like, the maps all have to connect. The lines have to be connected in GIS, not just accurately located across the entire city. Okay? And so we have started a GIS with KFW Engineering, now Collier Engineering, and what it is, it's data points. So we've, we have GPS all the hydrants, because that's easy. Engineers, take your survey team and go GPS all the hydrants, and then you put it in GIS, and now you actually have it accurate. But that hydrant's not located with a water line. It's not connected, so it could be a model. We have located, in some cases, by survey, a number of our water crossings, but not all of them. We were pretty good about it at first, and then we got busy, and we probably didn't have the survey team, because every time you call a survey team out, it costs you a deployment fee, and then you got to work through that. But we, we did all the valves on Northwest Milton Highway, because once we had them exposed, we had the survey team come do that. But there are many valves across the whole system that aren't there. Now, we know where our water wells seven, you know, five, six, seven, eight are, and nine, and they may or may not even be in the GIS, okay? So that's the first part that we figured out, well, we got to do that. And in my mind, when I was thinking about what a water model is, that's 90% of what I think we need to do, is just accurately locate the map, what type of pipe is, what's the size, what, where is it located exactly, and then do you have situational awareness of what's going on? We can do that by point figures, but then according to land engineering, to then take it and model it and synchronize it in GIS so it can all be used as one collective group of data points, there's a second step to that, okay? So then I get to, well, what is a hydraulic water model? And I've got some slides that I'm going to talk about that as we go in there, but just so you kind of know, it's a program that you buy, like Ncode does for our finance, and you have four or five, or maybe there's 10 different models that you can buy, and then you have to pay a fee for it, and then you have to renew it every year, and then it's a, and then it provides output, which I'll talk to you later about. So then, when you do a hydraulic model, you put all this data in, but it doesn't mean it's accurate, because you don't really know what's going on in the system. But in theory, you map it accurately, you put all it into a model, you go check it in the field, and you adjust all your data points to where it's synchronized, and then as a result of that, then you can come up with system capabilities, fire flows, and make recommendations, which comes into a technical memorandum, which gives you options for improvement, kind of like a water study. So there's the mapping, the modeling, and then the modeling is supposed to help you conclude with, with what your capabilities and future recommendations are. Tonight, we're only talking about, because there's some significant cost to this, and we said, whoa, I'm not going to go to City Council and say, let's get approval of all three phases. Let's break, and it was really John's idea, let's break it into three phases, and let's go with the GIS mapping and work through that. And then that will, will produce learning from our standpoint that'll help us inform us as to what to do with the hydraulic model and how that goes. So in your packet, I copied and pasted in your staff summary directly from land engineering what a GIS map means. And so we've broken it into a Phase 1 Alpha and a 1 Bravo, and the rough estimate that was given to staff a couple of weeks ago was this would cost us between $30,000 and $50,000. And so Phase 1 Alpha is status quo GIS map. Given the GIS shape files that we already have, the engineers have made that available, and we have passed that to land engineering. Our past historical records, our maintenance records, they're going to help us continue the map and say, here's what we currently have status quo. And it'll, it can be a comprised layer GIS file showing all current documented water utility infrastructure property owned and assessed by the city, and then there'll be a list of things that they will need afterwards. Like, for example, what I did have Johnny Frank and Jesse do was based upon their knowledge, produced this map of our water system, and this is a map using our previous water study, and they have color-coded by size and by type of water main, what they know to be out there. And then there's quite a few areas out there that are not known. So this would be something we would give them, and that they would take that existing, we haven't given to them yet, but we would give them that information, and they would take, and this is what we know. But then there'll be a lot of gaps, and they'll give us directions to say, well, if you want a complete water map, you need to go locate, and you need to provide us all the data from here, whether or not they have a survey team involved, or whether it's Collier Engineering, we hadn't gotten to that, and at least I haven't talked to them about it. But then land would then gather the needed information, and they will create a hydraulic model ready map, which is different than just a whole bunch of data points that gives you situational awareness. And it will be a map comprised of layered GIS files showing all the actual water infrastructure products owned and accessed by the city, but it will all be synchronized together in one model. And then there will be a list, this task order we're asking you to approve today will give us a list of potential improvements based upon the completed GIS model map and assessed risk to water quality, quantity, and reliability, and an opinion of probable cost, okay, which is all good. Okay? I'm not here to say that's all we're going to need, but that may be all we determine that we need, okay? But in the, in the final product, there will be a list of hydraulic modeling softwares for the consideration, which will include software capabilities and conditions best suited for the city of Chavino Park, because, you know, the model that San Antonio needs is going to be an extensive model that's going to be huge, you know, I'm sure it's going to be way more complicated than we would need with our simple four wells and three storage tanks. But there would be, if you want to go to the next step, there would be a listing of the software requirements, best suited cost estimates, a listing of other clients that have used it, we'll be able to research that, and then we would then be able to make an informed assessment and then present options to Council for further considerations. And then Phase 2, this whole process, to accomplish our objective in the town plan, is the actual model and the technical memo assessment report that will come out later. So just to kind of give you an idea of what that Phase 2 and 3 is, let's go to the next slide. Okay? Again, this is what we think we wanted, a product that can give us capital replacement renewal options, okay? What are the size of your water mains? What are your fire suppression needs? Improve the city's ISO ratings, okay? I'm not sure that even the model is going to improve the ISO ratings, okay? I'm pretty positive that there's almost no, there's not a whole lot that we can do that we haven't already done that's going to improve those ratings, okay? Because our water is very high, so if you're trying to improve the water, it's already really high, you're probably not going to improve it much. But we may need to take a look at some water storage capacities, and there might be some recommendations from that. That's what we started out with. Next slide. Again, a watering model system planning could help with capital improvements plans, sizing and infrastructure, emergency response planning, rehabilitation programs. Because we're grown out, you know, maybe- Because we're grown out, you know, maybe there's not as much of requirement for, for infrastructure sizing and optimization, but we're gonna get a good read on that in the initial first piece of this. Next slide. Ideally, you know, that's a map of Chavano, of the water system and our CCA, but, you know, we'll have a better idea of that. Next slide. This first step is to develop a model. That's buy the software, input all the data, and make the model work. But there's a lot that needs to be done after that to make the model useful. Again, what I mentioned, I didn't really realize this, you, you put the model in, and it gives you a bunch of readings based upon hypothetical engineering equations. Now you gotta go out, and you gotta go to different parts in the city. You gotta take readings, and use those readings in different times and peaks, and then you take that actual data, you input it into the model, and you calibrate, so what's called calibrating the model, to make it more accurate. You might get an 80% accurate model, just inputting all your data into the, into the program. And then you go make, you take it to 98 or 97% by adding data. And then, once you get the data, so what? You do the analysis. And then you come up with options, you make decisions based upon that. And then if you really wanna use the model, you've gotta train your guys to use the model. So, you know, I, I asked some of our water team guys, how often have you gone and looked at the GIS? And you can, you can predict what the answer was to that. All right? So, again, that's gotta be, you know, that's gotta be part of the equation, is, will this be a product that is useful in the field? Will they actually use it when they're looking to do things? Next slide. So, after test, test, Task One was done, you know, there is a project kickoff meeting. In fact, if you approve this task, there's gonna be a project kickoff meeting to where we get it in the box. Okay? But in theory, we would review the database, we would look at investigation software selections. Next slide, I think you got the gist of it. There's a whole bunch of stuff you gotta do, which is technical, to synchronize and build it. Next slide. All right? You verify the data, you draw it, you go to workshops. I mean, this is quite extensive, that's all I, I'm just showing you, because I don't understand all this at this point in time. But you, you know, there's a field investigation part. Next slide. Then you have an application of the hydraulic model, average and peak day conditions, you can figure out fire flow in different parts of the city, groundwater only, future supply needs, a lot of stuff. The potential is great. Next slide. And ultimately, you want recommended improvements, if there are. Next slide. And then there would be a presentation to you. That's all Phase Two and Three. So, you can't get to Phase Two and Three unless you do Phase One. Is that the last slide? Okay. So, ultimately, in your packet, and we didn't put it in the packet until, I think it was Thursday, maybe it was Friday, there is a task order that is, and maybe, Curtis, could you go to that task order on the, on the internet package? So, after we put together this briefing, and we did the lunch and learn, learn and lunch, you'll recall, with all of our engineering firms, when Tom Turk came and briefed us, when, every time Chris Otto comes and says, okay, here's another project we're going to do, we will have worked out, what are the tasks that, that, that the city wants to occur? And then what is their proposal? This isn't, remember, you can't go out and say, I wanna do a water model, and give it to three firms, and have three engineer firms bid on it, and they give you the cheapest price. What you do is you say, this is what I want, and then they say, okay, these are the services that I plan to give you, and here's the proposed mount. So, the proposed mount that they have provided to us, which I think came in Wednesday or Thursday last week, was $49,748. And this level of effort, which will detail the GIS update, and it will be in that, in accordance with the detail and in the format possible to put it into the water model. So there are a list of deliverables, which, I mean, I'm not gonna read through the whole thing, but there is a Task One, project management meetings. Okay? Got that. You can imagine what that is. There's the map updates. There's a preliminary map, there's an updated map, there's a water line review and modeling software recommendations. All that will come in to us. Uh, next slide. There's a, a number of assumptions and exclusions. So we have to provide a lot of the data. And that'll be a collaborative process for sorting all that out. Go up a little bit. And anyway, what John has told me is that their team has gotten together, and they have, based upon the shape files that we have given, you might just go back to that. Can you pull back up? They've looked at what their expected hourly effort is going to be, based upon the number of meetings, the updates, the, the, the billing per engineer. See, a project principal's $340 an hour, senior project managers, $255, then you go all the way down to administrator, you kinda see, your graduate level engineers are $120, et cetera. But that's how they came up with the, the estimate of $49,000. So, to my level of expertise, that's the overview. If you have specific questions for land and associate engineering, you can do that. I talked to John about whether or not we would be billed by hours, or whether this, we're approving a $49,748,000 project. And, because we talked about both options. And so, what this proposal is, a $49,748 task order. And that, and he, John can come out and explain this in more detail. If, if there is something that is unexpectedly easy, and that we find that the level of effort isn't gonna be required, $49,748, then we would do value engineering, and we would get down to that to some degree. So I'll, I'll close by that. If you have any further questions, discussion, questions to us, you know, I got backup behind me.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the engineer task order as presented, mapping the city of Chavano Park water system. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Buddy. We're now open for discussion. Pete, you made the motion, you get to ask questions first.
So, yes, I've got a question for John. John, a lot of times when you get all this information on a system, you, you can quickly assess the completeness of the data that you have. And Bill, I, I agree with you, when you start looking at the, the first part of this project, you're talking about mapping out your current system, and having a good, accurate model, or a good, accurate layout, and a diagram of what you've got, and where, where your gaps are. It's, it's, it's one of those things that's fundamental. I mean, you have to have that to operate a good system, so it's critical. So, John, when you got the information, I, I know this, our system has built, been built over time, we have bits and pieces, how complete is our current data?
We, we don't know, I guess, 100%, but there's a lot of good information, and your staff's been super cooperative. So they've basically shared everything that they've got. Like, like the city manager said, for example, the fire hydrants. So we have good grid coordinates of all the fire hydrants, but they're literally, it's like a scatter plot, and they're not connected to the, the water lines that provide the water through which, through which they flow. And so, we have maintenance records, in some cases, they're paper records, but what we wanted, what we aspire to do is to provide the city with a 2024 digital map that can be rep, that can be printed out, taken out to the field, to replace the 1988 paper map that wasn't 100% complete in 1988. And then, we can then provide a product from which you can, you can show the maintenance data, so you, we can see then, at the end, where we provide a map, you can see, hey, this, this area right here, you know, we never realized all the, all the maintenance that's occurred on this segment of the line. But to go back to, to your original question, all the information that you've got is available, it's just not, we, we can't, it's like, there's so many layers, it's hard to tell how complete it actually is at this time.
So, another question, whenever you do modeling on a piping system, elevations are critical. Do we have elevations of our current piping system?
Well, probably just a few. You know, so like, when we went, and, and Curtis, you may know more than I do, when we GPSed a couple of crossings, when we had the survey team come out there, we got specific survey data loaded. You know, the, the, here's where I know it is, we don't have depths, and we don't know exactly where those, what that is.
So, I noticed in the bid, you have multiple layers on how you did the bid. One of the things that seemed to be missing for me is, the first part is to actually document the system, and I agree 100% with that, that's the first step that you have to do. But it seems like there's an intermittent step, that would be an assessment of our current system, where you didn't have to actually do the modeling, but you could do an assessment to make recommendations on key things that are missing, and key observations as you documented the system. Was that being considered?
Yes, sir. Curtis, if you could go to the, the actual proposal map, or the proposal chart. So, Task 2.0 is the GIS map update. So that's just the map. And then Task Three is essentially where we provide you with our assessment of the map as it stands. And, and then provide recommendations on three software systems that the city might consider, and we'll provide pros and cons, based on our experience working with other clients and municipalities. And so, I, we just haven't gotten to the actual, the model aspect of it, because we think we're gonna find out as we do this, to your point, and I know you have background in the oil and gas industry, that the, that we may find out, hey, we don't have the elevations for this. We don't know exactly what type of valve maybe is right here, or what the age of this particular, you know, pipe or something is. So we may need to do some exploration, of which the city public works office may have the capability to do that, and it may be no extra, maybe no added cost. So, that's where, in my discussions with the city manager, Bill and I had discussed, okay, we don't wanna spend money that unnecessarily. So, so we, sort of a step-by-step approach, let's get a really solid map first, we'll provide the city with an assessment, our best engineering judgment of what that, that map, and what the conditions of the infrastructure gives us, and then we, the city can decide whether or not you, you need or want to move forward with a model or, or further work.
So, in our current system, I know, I know that we put new meters in, and whenever you do modeling, the, the mass balance becomes very critical on that. When you look at the number of users that we have, you have a lot of, of, of fluid exiting, and you have a lot of fluid coming in, so you have, the mass balance becomes critical. On our current meters, do they do instantaneous volumes and pressures? Do we get readings from those?
We get volumes, and I'll let, maybe Johnny knows the answer about pressures, I'm not sure about that.
No, unfortunately, we don't get pressures on, off the meters itself, it's just the reading itself, and then how many gallons per minute is actually flowing through that water meter to indicate to the resident.
And it is instantaneous?
Uh, yes. It'll, it'll let us know in real time, you know, whether it's a, it won't let us know whether, whether it's toilet leaking, but, you know, judging by what's passing to the meter, we can know whether it's something minute, or something major that the resident needs to be aware of.
Okay.
And, I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Miller, but we're, we've all been talking about this, and the model's not gonna be, I'm not gonna say never 100% complete, it's a living, breathing thing, that we all have to take our time and upgrade, and there may be things, currently the way we're sitting with our water system, we're not, we're built out, but that doesn't mean that the water model itself isn't gonna benefit us in any way. It may tell us that we have certain choke points that none of us even know about. And it'll allow us to make those, implement all those changes, to give better flow throughout our whole distribution system. It'd be a great move for both of us, all three of us to work together and get this done.
Okay, we'll come back to, to Pete, Buddy?
Yeah, in, in looking at the water model, John and Bill, I understand that, you know, it's limited just to our current water for Chavano Park. Is there some way eventually where we're gonna have the data for SaaS customers, for the remainder of Chavano Park, incorporated into this, to, just for down the line, if there's a need, especially with the water drainage in some of the areas, you know, like Chavano Creek, or, in, in certain parts of the city where there is drainage issues, are we gonna be able to incorporate both systems into this water model?
So, sir, the, the short answer is no, but the, the reason is because the scope of this is just, is just the water supply within the city of Chavano Park's water supply system. Drainage would be a separate system, as it generally never enters the water supply or the wastewater system. And so, we certainly have the capability as a, as a company to provide drainage assessments, drainage master plans for municipalities. We do work with SaaS, and SaaS should be able to provide the city with any information that the city would like on its portion of the SaaS water system. But that's not the scope of, of this project.
And, and the reason why I do ask is, I know that we have a lot of improvements going on with drainage, and some of the water supply, as, as tech dots implementing some of the systems. And as, as we continue to do work on days of volume and stuff, some of that's gonna spill over into areas that is just not exclusive to the Chavano Park water system. And, and that's why I'm curious about it.
Okay. Maggie, Conrad, Conrad?
My question is just for my.
Microphone.
Yes. We talked about the ISO, and that, that's the quality of water, right? We're already at a very high quality?
It's an insurance rating, standard rating. And they, they evaluate the firefighting capability and the water system, which the firefighters use to fight the fire. So, I think it's a 60/40.
Okay.
And, we are somewhere like, and I'll get it wrong, 36 out of 40 in our fire, I mean, our water, maybe even higher than that.
Okay.
Chief, help me out. Chief Dover?
We have very little wiggle room that we can improve in, in the water, because our water is rated pretty well. And, you know, our biggest fault was we didn't have a ladder truck. We got that now, but even still, he and I have been going detailed, how do we move to ISO One? And it's almost gonna be impossible unless you hire four more people.
Yeah, the, the water, the water system itself is just one component that's taken in, into consideration for our ISO rating. Currently, we're in ISO Two, which is very, very, very good. We're very lucky to have a great water system here. There is a little bit of room for improvement, however, it probably won't be enough to get us to that ISO One without some other factors. But again, the, the water system is one component of it.
We're good.
And this will improve that.
We're very good.
Yes. So we're, we're, we're actually looking really, really good where we're at. There is some improvement, as the city manager was saying, adding hydrants, and then the public works, working to increase main size and different things, and then with this water model showing where some of those deficiencies are, that, that's something that we can work to improve on that. But it's, it's just a component that's taken into consideration for ISO.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Conrad?
So, I'm wondering if we have a, kind of a bid here, I guess, and is this, does this include fieldwork, or is this documentation just coming from our city's documentation, from paper? Or we have somebody out there measuring this stuff, or looking for?
So this is, this is our effort, and, and does not include our fieldwork. We don't anticipate doing fieldwork, because what we had discussed with the city was working collaboratively, collaboratively, and then the public work staff, if there was some piece of information that was easily obtainable that we just didn't have, then in the course of their, performing their, their routine maintenance, then they could go out and gather the data and provide it to us.
So y'all are gathering up documentation that we have here, and summarizing it, and trying to find any gaps, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Lee?
Does EAA or Texas Environmental require any of this to be done?
So, I know you're asking that question to me. I know that you have to, you have to report losses to the Texas Water Developmental Board. The, there are standards, the TCEQ maintains the water quality standards for the state. And, so, we believe that this overall effort is going to improve the city's ability to maintain the TCEQ standards. The Edwards Aquifer Authority, the EAA that you mentioned, are the ones that provide the pumping permits for the city to draw water from the Edwards Aquifer. And so, this would also, I guess, inform the city's ability on long-term water storage, and in case of a drought or something like that, can you pump water when it's available and store it in ground storage or elevated storage tanks? How much storage is actually in the pipe network itself? So, I think this is just going to improve, to get back to your original point, none of it is, I don't believe, directly required by either of those two agencies, but this should inform the city's decisions with respect to permitting and regulatory actions from those two agencies.
Okay, so, no. The next part of my question is, having said that, will this give us any possibility of lowering our fees to these agencies that we have to pay in order to maintain our own water system?
It, it's possible only because it may, well, I wouldn't say only, but it's possible because it will in, inform investment decisions so that you can do the ounce, the proverbial ounce of prevention vice the pound of cure if something actually breaks.
Last question, I'm assuming with the advances in artificial intelligence and the fact that this is all programmed, that we'll have some predictive capability?
Yes, sir. The, the model certainly, once built and calibrated, will definitely, you can do what-if scenarios, and, and it would definitely help with emergency response, or to inform investments based on the likelihood or risk that, that you would see of certain scenarios.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to you, Pete.
John, just as a clarification, this is a lot more than just a docu, drafting exercise. We, when you look at the data that we have, it's probably in a lot of different forms. Is, is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, it's not just taking the data and drafting it on to a system that then gives you a map. It's taking multiple levels of data and then compiling that to a very interactive map. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else? John, at the end of the day, there's going to be a lot of data that's accumulated. Who owns the data?
The city will own the data.
Okay. And as far as the transferability of the data between the different programs that we can put this data into, how, is this like Excel and, and Lotus and, golly, those things actually work pretty well together? Or is this like Peachtree and QuickenBooks where they're just like two different languages?
Yes, sir. This, this will all be very usable data, just, excuse me, just the same as the city provided it to us, and it's GIS-based shape files, so just the same as we could pull it into, excuse me, our GIS software. We can, we will provide it back to the city so they can be used by the city engineers' Colliers system, or if the city were to buy a license, it would be something that the city could use. You can export it to Excel spreadsheets and manipulate it and create charts and everything else. And so, I think it's going to be, the city will own it, and the city will be able to use it.
So, how easy is it going to be for us to turn this into laminated sheets that we put it, put into a binder in the back of the pickup so we know where all the shut-off valves are?
It's as easy as hitting the print button, if you have a, or taking it to a print shop if you need a bigger printer, but it's that easy, sir.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, John, thank you very much. Bill, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to approve the proposed engineer tax order, task order as, as presented for mapping the city of Chavano Park water system. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much, John. Eliza, thank you for being with us this evening. Brings us to item 8.2. Discussion Action: Community Mailboxes Prompted by a Request from Chavano Creek Including Reimbursement of Partial Cost to Replace. Update Old Poorly Secured Community Mailboxes and Provide Security Enhancements That Will Deter or Prevent Theft. This is Pete and Lee's item originally. Are y'all satisfied in turning this over to Bill for a briefing as we kind of go into it? Buddies, I'm sorry, buddies. Pete comes up with so many different things. Yeah, Pete takes responsibility for so many things. I apologize for that, buddy.
No, I'm good with it.
Okay, Bill?
Unless Pete wants to take it. Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, that, that's a great way to work it.
Well, we introduced this topic in the February meeting, and there was a lot of discussion, it was helpful, and there was no action taken, but, but the guidance to staff was to continue to research and provide recommendations regarding the crime prevention and deterrence options. So, we actually have, you know, it's not like this is our only task, full-time job, but there's been a lot of effort since the February meeting, I might just add. I summarized that in your staff summary, and, just a second, Chief, and highlighted in, in, in yellow, everything that is kind of new and relevant. So, I will say that Chief Fox and I are in touch with Dusty Lingard, who is the, her title's Delivery Growth Management Office in the U.S. Postal Office here, but she has oversight on community mailboxes. She is a little hard to get a hold of, but when she, you do get a hold of her, she's very helpful, and it's, it's been great. We got some updates specifically. I think we start off with the fact that our going-in position last month was that, well, we had all these clusters, and we had different homeowners' associations in different areas in the, in the Chavano Creek, and, and the estates were kind of in the same boat. So, one thing that we learned in coordination with U.S. Postal Service here is that there's been a big effort to improve the security of the post office boxes based upon political pressures that's been placed, especially in the state of Texas, but across the United States. And that, in our specific case, the U.S. Postal Service, Post Office, they intend to replace all the mailboxes in the, what we call the estates. And they're able to do that based upon their own internal guidance policy is because there's not a homeowners' association associated with the estates, even though they have community mailboxes. So, it's funny that they don't distinguish between a, a homeowners' association with, that's gated community and an open community with public streets. So, that's unfortunate, because Chavano Creek falls in that gray area where it's, it's not private streets, but it's open and it's public streets. So, that's good news. They were talking about five mailboxes being replaced in the next couple of weeks, and then the rest of them in a month or two. So, that part of the equation looks like that's covered. And then I remind you that when my initial discussion with them, and I talked about Bentley Manor, my concerns there, she ordered the replacement of all the locks on the Bentley Manor mailboxes so that they would be the new ones. So, they can't replace the whole box, but they can replace the locks, so they have upgraded locks going in there. So, essentially, that leaves us with just one most vulnerable area. And Jeff Galt had come to us, he talked to us last time, he's talked to us today, and I apologize, he sent a letter, and it was, I think it was while I was out on personal vacation last week, and he sent it to me, I think it might have been Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, but I didn't send it to you in advance, and I had intended to do that. But I made copies of, of it there. A lot of these are the same points he, he most likely talked about in the meeting, and you can take a look at that. He's done a great job of bulletizing his key points in the memo, so you can take a look at that as, as, as we move forward. The other thing that has happened is that he got a quote for the actual replacement, the removal and replacement of the 11 mailbox clusters that need to be replaced that he's proposing, and it's a very reasonable quote of $1,507. So, I re, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Fox in a minute, but I remind you that the task was to Chief Fox, what options do we have to deter these and prevent, you know, theft of the mail? So, with that, I will turn it over to Chief Fox, who's done a great job of putting this together.
Good evening, Council. So, like we discussed, the topic at hand was to perform a mini-security assessment, look at some options for security for the mailboxes and, and that within Chavano Creek. So, a couple of the people that we talked with was Dusty Lingard, and also Samantha Bradley, who's a postal inspector for the U.S. Postal Service. She's somebody that I know and wanted to get a feel of for the law enforcement aspect of the security of these mailboxes go. So, one of the first things that we did was, my predecessors, before I even came here to Chavano Park, had started a map of community mailboxes, cluster mailboxes. There's only about 50 on there or so. So, we kind of took that, and we actually went out and verified those locations, and went and added other locations, and we actually found that there are 62 cluster mailboxes within the city limits of Chavano Park. That includes residential and commercial properties. We went ahead and we GPS-coordinated mapped those locations and photographed them, and put them into a spreadsheet and uploaded it into Google Maps. We take that and we break it down to Chavano Creek alone. We have two maps here, one has an overlay on it that we'll discuss here in a second. But the maps here on the, with the beige when the, on the left, they're the 15 community mailbox locations within Chavano Creek community. Of those 15 community mailbox locations, the ones with red circles around are the different locations that are being proposed by Chavano Creek for replacement. One of the questions that was, came up to me in looking at this was, well, if I'm an HOA and I'm being forced to take control of community mailboxes, I should have the option to get rid of them if I want. And apparently, that is not an option with the Postal Service. The Postal Service believes very much on centralized delivery times. For the time that it takes a mail carrier to drop off to two or three residential locations, they can fill an entire mailbox of 10 to 12 and then move on to the next. So, privatizing the mailboxes is not an option. We'll look a little bit further here in a second with the overlay, because when we did this overlay, it brought up a couple of things that we took notice of, but like I said, we'll discuss that here in a second. Next up was, we had prepared this prior to the last meeting, but these are the reported community mailbox incidents that have been reported to the police or that officers have found when they've been conducting a proactive activity. The numbers, we went back to 2021, that's about the timeframe, the first full year when I took over as a police chief, and we started there because I trust these numbers. We went through and documented case number, date of incident, location, and there's a little bit more to this that's not shown in the slide as far as what was done. You can see the, kind of the range from 2021, 2022 was pretty active, 23, and then so far this year, in 2024, we have four. The i, the locations in red all relate to Chavano Creek, and so, we just kind of wanted to make that distinction.
So, I'm back. What, what level confidence do you think that, that this is 100% accurate in terms of every theft that might have occurred in the community mailboxes?
These are only the reported ones. They could very well have.
To our police, right?
What's that?
Reported to our police.
Correct. Correct. Reported to us as a, documented in a case number. There's plenty of times where somebody may have noticed it and just walked away, went about their own business, found that they had mail stolen, and, you know, said, well, I'll worry about it later, it was just junk mail or something to that effect. But these are the documented ones that were reported to the police department.
And they, and I don't want me to belabor it, but I am very confident there was a lot of, a lot more of these that occurred that did not get reported, and they may have been reported to the postmaster instead of the police department, or they weren't reported. I don't have any specific idea, that's only one-third, or that's half, or whatever, but it's just anecdote, just, just monitoring, talking with HOAs next door, all that stuff. I know that there's more, but, you know, you get the point.
Doing our research, letter carriers, they're regularly victim nationwide of robberies. And you'd think that'd be kind of strange, but actually, what a lot of these robberies entail is that they're looking, they'll hold up the mail carriers at gunpoint, they'll threaten them with physical force, but what they're really looking for are the keys for the mailboxes. So, on the left-hand side, you can see the arrow keys. These are the old antiquated key systems that the Postal Service used to use, or they still do use in some cases. And then below that picture, you can see how criminals counterfeit those arrow keys to engage in a variety of felonious activities. These are so bad that at one point in time, because they're so easily counterfeited, that the Postal Service would put out law enforcement intelligence bulletins to the police to be on the lookout for these types of keys when we make an arrest on somebody with drug use, mail theft, identity theft, anything like that, in order to seize those keys, because that's what they are, they're counterfeit keys. Matter of fact, we were talking with the apartment complex down here, the Platinum, down here at Heebner and Northwest Military, about some other stuff, and they'd made notion that they'd had some mailboxes broken into recently, and when they were cleaning up after themselves, after the suspects and so forth, they actually found one of these counterfeited mailbox keys laying in the grass. And this has all led from an article that was presented here on KSAT here a few weeks back about the nationwide crackdown on making arrests on subjects that are looking for, to rob mail carriers because of these arrow keys. So, with us, we talked to Samantha Bradley, the postal inspector, about, you know, I asked her, I said, with the new, stronger, secure mailboxes and the locks, are they more secure, are they a better approach to the old antiquated boxes? Well, of course, that answer is yes. But she said, if you'd have asked me the same question eight months ago, I'd have told you they're 100% more effective. She says, fortunately, with new technology that comes out to make things more secure, criminals are going to take on and act to try to counter that. And so, she says, over the past eight months nationwide, she says, they're beginning to see a lot more burglaries increasing with new mailboxes and so forth. But what they're doing now is, instead of going after the keys from the letter carriers, they're actually going after the boxes for the locks themselves, because the locks are so much more secure that they go after the boxes themselves in order to get the locks, in order to try to defeat the locks and make money off that. She gave me a couple instances where, in one case, they're actually stealing, stealing the entire mailbox and taking off with it in order to take that to a remote area and try to figure out ways to defeat the locks. She says, in one subdivision that was under development in a fairly isolated area in northern part of the county, nobody was living in this area, and thieves actually went out there and cut the doors off the, the new mailboxes in order to try to take them back in order to try to learn how to defeat the locks. Few little talking point areas that we'll kind of discuss, we'll just real quick, is the mailroom concept, lights at gated, video surveillance. We're not going to really talk about 24/7 police presence, because that is an option. However, it's not a feasible option. Video surveillance is another option, whether it be mailboxes, entrances, entrance/exit, LPR cameras. Another option is being, obviously, the improved security cluster mailboxes. Also, relocation of vulnerable cluster mailboxes. One of the things that we found out and we'll discuss here in a second is that the Postal Service is willing to relocate cluster mailboxes when the property owners, or the HOA in this case, coordinate with them, and they are willing to pour the pad for the new locations. And then simply, the education of residents is always an obvious option, whether it be through the neighborhood crime rat, crime watch program, informed delivery program that USPS has, or just regular mail pickup. So, the mailroom concept, when I asked the postal inspector, I said, what's the probably top-of-the-line, most secure aspect that you could do for, to prevent mail theft? She basically annotated a mailroom concept. What this concept is, this is a day and night picture, this is actually Captain Kelly's apartment complex. The mailboxes, there's a mixture inside of the new secure locks, and then, or mailboxes with the secure locks, and then some of the. The mailboxes, there's a mixture inside of the new secure locks and then, or mailboxes with the secure locks and then some of the older mailboxes. This is located in one central facility. It's gated. There's actually a combination padlock on there that the residents have combinations to. At night, you can see it's well-lit, and there's also camera surveillance there on the property itself. Now, if you ask Captain Kelly, "Do they still get broken into?" Absolutely. People go through that gate, leave the gate unlocked, leave it open. Criminals go in there. There's still a combination of old and new mailboxes in there. And he actually said this morning that the newer mailboxes hadn't been broken into yet since they've been installed, but they're still breaking into the older ones. Chavano Heights, we actually went over to them. They're our neighbors across the street on Lock Hill from Chavano Creek. They took some pretty good steps recently to upgrade their neighborhood's security. They're a gated community, but back in 2022, one of the things they did, they went with a Flock security camera system. It also has license plate recognition capabilities, and they put that up at their entrances. And it captures going in and coming out. The other thing they started doing in the fall of last year, and they finished about January timeframe this year, we spoke with the HOA president and the management association company's representative for Chavano Heights. And one of the things that they wanted to do was find a cost-efficient camera, lights, pretty much everything we kinda discussed at the last meeting. And so, they found a, a local vendor, and they found an item we'll discuss here in a second, but they decided to put them up at each one of their mailbox locations. They had one mailbox that was still antiquated, that they had gotten replaced back in December, I believe it was, or sometime this past fall. And then this January, they had the light system installed. So the bottom-left corner is obviously nighttime picture, and the bottom-right is a daytime picture. And this is the same location in Chavano Heights that they have there. This is the light that they came across with. It's a local company here in San Antonio. It's a solar, self-contained, security camera light sys- it's a video system as well. And it has a solar power on top, solar panel on top for power. It's got an integrated hard drive, integrated camera, integrated lighting system. It's motion-activated at night, so it's off until somebody walks into the proximity of it and it comes on. It gets brighter as you get closer. The camera's most insensitive. It will begin recording once somebody gets in within range of it as well. There's also lighting cover options, so if it's up against somebody's backyard or front yard and it's too bright, the company can put on a shield, basically, to block that light from them. It's all self-contained and comes with a pull and everything. And all you do to pull up data from it, you just pull underneath it, similar to our radar speed signs. You pull up to it, you log into it with security credentials to a website, and you can pull it up right there within a hundred, three hundred feet of the device and pull down the information that you need. Is it the catch-all, cure-all? No, not at all. You know, actually, if I ever went to it, you know, I'd wanna do more research on the quality of the pictures and so forth. They supposedly have an LPR-capable camera as well. However, when I asked about that pricing, it was so new that they couldn't give me any details on it. The price for that, I actually called up the company and I said, "I want one of exactly what has been posted in Chavano Heights." And so, this is a cost estimate quote that they provided me. So that one device installed is about fourteen hundred dollars, roughly. We talked about new versus old mailboxes. New mailboxes on the left, old mailboxes on the right. And the inset pictures, they were provided for me, so disregard the lettering on there. But these are the newer locks here on the left, and this is the old antiquated arrow locks on the right that were so easily defeated. So, we looked at the Chavano, Chav- or sorry, excuse me, cinnamon oak overlay a little bit, and a couple of things kinda pointed out to us. If we look at ci- oops, sorry. If we look at cinnamon oak, starts down here at the bottom, they have four mailboxes on cinnamon oak. They have one down here in the hundred block, another one in the three hundred block, then the five hundred block and the six hundred block of cinnamon oak. When you started looking at these, we kinda noticed that all the mailboxes, nobody wants to have a mailbox in a front yard. They're unsightly. You get a lot of vehicle, pedestrian traffic. You just don't want them to see them. So they're usually put in an area that's kind of isolated a little bit. Well, these on cinnamon oak are a little bit different than the rest. Curtis, do you have that one individual picture that you can pull up and just kinda blow up that five and six hundred block area? It's kinda hard to see on the small screens or even on the big screen. But if we zoom into that area, if he's able to do it. If not, we'll just press on. You kinda notice where the locations of these mailboxes are. These are large properties. Okay, that'll work. So this is the six hundred block here of cinnamon oak. These are large properties here. They're not front-facing onto the cinnamon oak in that area. These mailboxes, this looks like a greenbelt here, potentially, but you have a large wall here along Lock Hill Salmon to block out the vehicle traffic and so forth, and there's nothing here behind it. And then there, you have the cluster mailbox. And if you look at this area, there's no forward-facing houses in this area. It's the same with the five hundred block and the three hundred block. They're large properties, so they kinda go in the midst of the backyard, right through here, the backyard of these houses. So a criminal could actually be out here, even though it's lit, he could be out here at night and have his way with these mailboxes. So that raised the question that I had with Dusty. Can we relocate cluster mailboxes? And she said, "Absolutely." She says, "We prefer that they be all together," you know, "because of the centralized delivery program." So that's where she says, "They're more than willing to relocate the cluster mailboxes if a owner, a HOA, would want, as long as, you know, there's coordination involved with the location and the HOA or the property owners pour the pad, and then they would relocate the mailboxes." So that's an option as well. And then in closing, we have the simplest of all, which is the education of residents. Simply picking up your mail on a regular basis, participate in the crime wa- watch if you see it, report it, or even informed delivery program with USPS. It's something I do. You sign up online. I've done it for years. For example, every morning, I get an email with scans of the front covers of what I'm supposed to be expecting to the mail for that day. Today, I know my wife had reordered a credit card that had been lost, and I told her it was supposed to be in the mail today, because it showed up on the informed delivery, so she could go out and look for it specifically. That's what I have.
Thank you, Chief. Bill?
Yeah, I, I think we had this slide here with the total cost, but in the letter that I gave you hard copy, there was an adjusted quote. So that quote now for just the mailboxes themselves is about twenty-six thousand dollars. I'm rounding up. Okay, so that, th- this chart here was the first presentation that was given by Jeff, but the more accurate one is in here, so that's what we're talking about. What's the next slide? If there's another one? Okay, we talked about this before. You know, can we use public funding for this? And there's, there's the rule there. If, if the, it's prohibited if the predominant purpose does not accomplish a public purpose, and that's what council would have to determine.
Is that, that's a legal question. Is that something for council to determine, legal questions? Or do we have a qualified attorney here today that can determine legal questions for us? I, I, I never expected my clients to tell me what the law was whenever I practiced outside of the city.
Well, we discussed this a little bit before, and this is, you know, this is, according to Dan, this is a council's decision. You get guidance from the attorney and they can tell you. In this case, you know, I'm not gonna speak for Megan here, but, you know, determine what is-
You can speak for Dan.
What, what is the predominant purpose? I mean, that's a subjective thing as well, so.
Well, you know, you can certainly speak for Dan, because he's not here, and we'll just all accept that you have, you know exactly what you're talking about. We talked about this and where the, where the mailboxes were. One of the things that Conrad listed for all of us at the last meeting was that all of these mailboxes that we're, that we're discussing are on City of Chavano Park-controlled property. They're all in our easements, or they're on our, and they are on our direct streets. And Conrad, I, I thought you've, well, why don't you, I don't wanna speak for you. What were your thoughts when you were asking that question?
I think it's the two, two questions. It was, part of it's in our easement, do we own the, or responsible for or own the ground underneath them? Do we own the mailbox? And then, this is residence, this is theft from one of our residents. That was the other part of that.
Okay. Bill, do you have any thoughts before we turn it over to council to entertain a motion? And I'm, I'm gonna talk about this in a two-part approach. Do you have any thoughts before I turn to council?
I think, as I've talked to probably, I said last meeting, and I said, "Most of you, I talked to, I think that there is, there is a public purpose to this based upon we are responsible for deterring crime. If there is a crime, then it's against our private citizens." And that there is a whole security thing of having a safe neighborhood and doing what we can, if not. And then, the other thing that I, I mentioned before, that even if you determine that it is for a public purpose, it serves a public purpose, doesn't mean you have to fund it. I mean, that's another decision the city council has to determine.
Okay. I'm gonna ask that any motions be broken into two parts. The first part is to consider the mailboxes alone. The second part, if you're interested in doing that, to have a second motion, independent of the first motion, and after the completion of the first motion, to consider additional security measures that might be beneficial to the non-gated areas of the community concerning the community bellboxes. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to assist Chavano Creek, or for Chavano Creek to assist the city in securing new mailboxes in Chavano Creek. Buddy?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that council consider appropriating the amount of money needed to purchase a mailbox on behalf of Chavano Creek.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Maggie, a second in the motion. We're now open for discussion on that item. Lee?
When last we spoke of this, a question came up with the legality. This is up on the screen. And I recall someone saying, "We should talk to the Attorney General to get a read on this." Has that been accomplished?
Well, no, we did not. And really, I don't have the ability to talk to the Attorney General and give them questions. It's very, there are very limited cases, and Megan, you can probably explain to me where you could do that.
Right, so I mean, the purpose of the Attorney General is not gonna weigh in on an advisory opinion. And so you do have to have very specific facts and a very specific legal question. If it requires assessment of the law to those facts, they're gonna defer, as they typically do in their AG opinions, and tell you that that is a question that's not within their purview. That's a question for the courts. And so it has to be a very limited question. I don't know that you're gonna get the Attorney General to tell you whether or not each individual specific public purpose or policy decision that you determine is what, is gonna fit this criteria, because this is a question for a court to decide. If it's challenged, is whether or not that was a public purpose.
Mr. Mayor, my motivation is that we've all heard from constituents, what about my mailbox questions. This being accomplished is going to possibly cause some people to become confrontational about their mailboxes not being replaced, and the Attorney General office exists. I mean, somebody has a way of getting to them, because we all read about his opinions on these certain things. So I know it can be accomplished, and we do have people in Chavano Park that will find that crack in the wall to get in there. I just wanna make sure that we're on firm legal ground in order to spend money on a few people's mailboxes because their mail is being stolen. I, I am also a victim of mail theft and destruction of my mailbox two years, three years ago. So, yes, it's a real thing. But I wanna make sure that Chavano Park is not endangering itself against future expenditures, either to protect our decision on this particular subject or having been told to replace all mailboxes as they come up for replacement.
Well, you know, just an observation, on the east side of the city, we have committed ourselves with bond funds to replace and to move and, and replace mailboxes for some two-hundred-and-ninety homes. And we used public monies to do every single one of those. Many of those were built in the cities right of way, and we are paying to replace those at the level that they were, even though through most of those, most of those mailboxes that were in place were put in place when the city did not permit people to put, did not authorize people to put those mailboxes for the accumulation of mail in their permanent mailboxes. Now, there, Lee, you were on council long enough ago that you can remember when we had to have portable mailboxes. Everything was portable. And over time, that has changed and our interpretations have changed. And so we have already spent more money than is under consideration today for Chavano Creek to do exactly the same thing in the old side of the city.
I will defer to the two legal minds in the room.
Well, I'm deferring to only one legal mind in the room, and that's Megan. And if, if there's something that we disagree with, we can blame Dan. Pete?
So, so Megan, one of the things I find very interesting is, when we, when we were talking to Dan about this, one of the things in the past, when we asked Dan a legal question, he's very, very clear. He'll, he'll get on one side or the other and let you really know clearly what, what his opinion is. When we talked about this with Dan, there appeared to be some gray areas. Would you agree that when you, when we're talking about this issue of public purpose, that we are in a gray area? Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
Okay. Would, one of the things that concerns me about this as well is we're going havesies, right? That the city's paying for half and the HOA's paying for half. And that really concerns me, because I think that puts us deeper into a gray area.
But, but I disagree. I know, I'm-
If this, if this was being proposed, that this is public service and for us to pay for the entire amount, I, I, I would see that as okay. There's a clear argument for public purpose. Does the fact that this is being split between the City of Chavano and the HOA make this grayer conversation?
I don't know that I would, I would say it makes it grayer. I mean, there's a lot of times where cities are called upon or asked to contribute funds or provide funds for activities, whether it's organizationally with nonprofits or community partners and stakeholders. And, and the fact that the city is putting up a, a limited amount or not the full amount, I don't believe makes it less of a public purpose. It depends on what y'all's feeling is regarding that public purpose or, or the benefits to the public in general from the expenditure of those funds.
Okay. The example that the mayor used, that we're paying, you know, for the, for the roads in Old Chavano Park and that services that community, we didn't ask the residents there to pay for half of the, the streets. We, they paid, the city paid for the entire street because it is the public streets. Fair enough? So when you look at the mailboxes, are those public pieces of property?
I am not, I am not intimately familiar with your project. I have worked on, with cities on projects where they are expanding or widening the improved road, road surface. And within that project, they are typically relocating mailboxes, because those mailboxes are allowed within that right-of-way. And, and to do so, they are minimal expenditures or contributions. Not, I'm not gonna say that they've replaced like-for-like with full brick, full rock or stone mailboxes, but they have provided, cities have provided a certain amount of funds for those projects for relocation of mailboxes to the greatest, to the extent that they can't just be picked up and pushed back.
Another question. Alderman Powers referred to that there is some risk associated with this, potential legal risk. What are the legal risks if we enter into this agreement with the homeowners' association?
So are we, are we contemplating entering into an agreement with the homeowners' association? Or are we just contemplating an expenditure of funds for a project that they are going to also be-
The motion that was, that was entertained from Buddy, related to the HOA providing the City of Chavano Park money for this, because we're required- the city of Chavino Park money for this, because we're required to maintain sufficient control over the expenditure to ensure the public purpose is met. So, it's our project, it's not theirs. They're funding us, we're not funding them. That would be that we're in charge of the money, and they're not in charge of the money.
Okay.
It's not a reimbursement.
So, because, because there is money being transferred here, are we entering into an agreement with the homeowners' association in any way? Bill?
Well, I would ask Alderman, Alaman to clarify his motion.
Well, I specifically...
Well, I mean, my question is, did you make a motion to fund the full amount or half amount?
I said the appropriate amount, is what I said.
Oh, you said appropriate.
Appropriate amount, for that purpose, because I have, I have to agree with Alderman, with Pete. And because it is a, for a public use, and I think the council has brought up some very valid points, that, you know, we're not paying for half a street, we're not paying for half a mailbox. I mean, it's for the betterment of the city. It's, it does serve a public purpose. And as some of the speakers said, for, who came up, it, it's a constitutional right to receive your mail. It's a deterrent, it's going to save on, on the amount the police has to spend, time, money. I just don't think overall, it, I don't think there's a question as whether or not it is, it serves a public purpose. It's the amount, how we word it, appropriate it, and move forward with the project.
Yeah. I don't, Megan, you know, I hate to put you on the spot without the opportunity of done research and coming in here, but the, you know, we, we can see a public purpose. The question comes down to one word, and that's the predominant purpose. Is predominant a 75-25? Is it a 51-49? Is it a 90-10? What is a predominant purpose that we as councils, that the council members will be making their decision based on?
So you're, you're correct. I do not know the current state of the law on predominant purpose, as far as if that's an actual percentage.
But then it comes down to the definition of a Webster's dictionary definition. That's where the Texas const, that's where the Texas courts normally go with words of common usage, is what is the Webster's dictionary usage whenever you say a predominant purpose? It says the expenditure's predominant purpose does not accomplish a public purpose. So, the answer is, our expenditures of everything that we do in the city of Chavino Park must accomplish, must have a predominant purpose to accomplish a public purpose.
And then the rest of that sentence after the comma is, but instead benefits private parties.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, if the, if the council's position is that there is a public purpose to, to participating in the cost to upgrade or replace the public, the mailboxes, and that you feel like that purpose benefits the public as a whole, and not just those private parties, because like you've already identified, we've got some increased, you know, decreased, hopefully, police responses, decreased calls, decreased thefts of, of those mailboxes, then that would serve a public purpose.
Okay. Now, back to Buddy.
And, and I think that the HOA president has pointed the, very specifically, that it serves no private function. The, the land is controlled by the city, the US Postal Service owns the mailbox. So, other than the HOA being a facilitator, there's no private purpose.
But others, but, I mean, it's also been identified, I mean, there are other locations to be mindful of.
Sure, because there's a lack of documentation when the city went ahead and took over Chavino Creek.
Yeah.
And I think that's the whole thing. If we had proper documentation, we wouldn't be sitting here asking for it. We would demand that the US Postal Service replace those mailboxes, just like they are doing in the estates, because the estates were part of Chavino Park from the beginning, and there was documentation that they were going to be controlled by the US Postal Service. We lack that documentation through the HOA, at no fault of the HOA.
Do y'all have any comments before I go back to this side of the room? Okay, Pete? Well, just to, just to help you before you get there, predominantly is mainly. That means that it's more likely true than false.
So, so Bill, my next question is, one of the things I'm always concerned with is if we're setting precedent. I don't like to enter into gray areas where nobody has been there before. Are we setting any precedence here, or has anything like this happened in the past where we've had situations where we have funded situations like this in the past, that are very, that could be similar, and we're not setting a precedent?
I think that you will set a precedent, but you're not bound to that precedence, okay? And so, I, I don't, you know, I'm not a technical definition of setting a precedence, but you've done something once, you're likely, or you possibly might be expected to do it again. I mean, that's probably true. The, the example that I could tell you is the, is the wall on Northwest Military Highway. The wall on Northwest Military Highway, you recall, homeowner, it fell down, and it, he repaired it. And then it fell down again, and he came and asked for city council help, and city council said no. A wall before Bill Hill's time. And then, it fell down again, and then he came again, and I happened to be in office, I mean, in the city manager's office. And part of his complaint was that it was not built to standard at the time. And then, in research, and you can see it, it was built with a very low footer, and then it had metal poles in it, and it had goat wire. And according to Laddie Denton, he had proposed a wall, and that was rejected because they didn't want solid walls. They didn't know, we probably had no solid walls in Chavino Park at the time. But later, as they started developing the estates, the estates came and said, "We want a solid wall," because you got Northwest Military Highway having to listen to that noise. So they built the three or four feet on top of the one-foot, it really wasn't a proper footer. And so what you had was you had leaning action and some other things that occurred. It was kind of an ad hoc. So, his position was, and, and in the HOA's DCCR, it says that that fence, that wall is the private owner's responsibility, and that they would need to maintain it. But his position was, yeah, but it wasn't built to standard, and there's fault to the, of the developer, and moreover, it's a reflection on the city. You know, and I will tell you, without exaggerating, I'd get calls from my brother and friends that I knew, and they would give me a hard time, say, "Hey, Bill, when you going to fix your damn wall?" You know, "Well, it's not my wall." And it was, it sat there for months. And there were many, many citizens that complained because it was a reflection on Chavino Park. So we brought it into city council. Charlie Zek was the attorney. He gave us this exact, this is the exact, you know, section of the thing. And he challenged you, you know, is it a public, he was fairly neutral. He said, "You have to determine, you have to make that call." That was his read, that was his guidance. And it was, it was determined that there was a public use, a public purpose to that wall, aesthetics, and the city's reputation, and all the things. And yes, it did serve as a wall, a barrier for that, that homeowner who also benefited from that. But the council made a determination that that would be a public service. We talked about setting a precedence. And it was a split vote, but it was approved. And in that case, we, we funded one-third, Bitter Blue funded one-third, and the homeowner funded one-third. And that was meant to be an indicator of levels of responsibility and what might occur. And then there was caution, because they had me evaluate, and I walked the entire east-west, as well as the northwest with a builder, and we evaluated in a green amber-red, and we said, "Hey, this is likely to be a problem in the future." And they said, "Yeah, but this homeowner has suffered, it's a public purpose, we'll try to educate the other folks along the wall," and it passed. Well, about six months later, after repair was done, another section fell, first time it had fallen. And even though there was a public purpose to that, city council said, "Just because it's a public purpose, doesn't mean we have to fund it." That homeowner brought it before the city council, and the city council did not fund that. So, yeah, there was probably a precedent set, but that it wasn't followed. It wasn't, you're not bounded by that. It is a independent decision based upon the factors associated with it.
So, I'm, I'm trying to follow the logic through here. And the logic for the wall was the fact that there was a shared responsibility, right? That this, the homeowners had some responsibility, the city had some responsibility, and the developer had some responsibility. And if we move that precedence to this, what we are saying is that the city has some responsibility for these thefts that are, to prevent these thefts that are going on. Is, is that a fair statement?
We have a responsibility to deter crime. We have a responsibility to investigate crimes against our citizens. The property was built, you know, those mailboxes originally were installed by the developer, who then did it that, along with the right-of-way to the, in that case, to the post office. Those are post office box properties. They have made a policy decision that says, even though I'm, they're responsible for delivering mail, and it is a public purpose, that they can't, essentially, they can't afford to do it all. So those homeowners' association mailboxes, they're putting it on the homeowners' association because they believe they can, they can do that. So, you know, they are replacing locks, and they are relocating, they're doing certain things, and certain things they're not.
So I'm trying to rationalize the comments that Alderman Powers made, and is the fact that, you know, if his mailbox is broken in, would the city pay for that? So I'm trying to distinguish the difference between our responsibility in that case and in the case of Chavino Creek. So, the, the reason that we're saying that there's a difference here, is it, is it because it's a community mailbox? It is on the ride, city's right-of-way? And it is the best solution to deter crime? Is that, is that the logic?
The best solution would be to, you know, as Chief mentioned, which create gated, lighted mailboxes with security cameras, which are unaffordable. So I would say that this is a, an affordable solution, because it's community, and it would provide some level of protection, not guaranteed, but a lot more than there is now.
Yeah. Pete, I went back and read the definition again. And I read it backwards. Do the mailboxes mainly accomplish a private purpose with exceptions? If that's the stand, that is the standard, that mainly we're benefiting people, but the city might get some benefits. For example, Lee's mailbox, that's Lee's mailbox, and we send stuff there. And there's the one-off chance that, as an individual resident, that he is going to be victimized. Now, on the community mailboxes, Chief can tell us, in the 17 cases that were involved here, how many man-hours were dedicated to investigating the mailbox break-ins in the non-gated communities? So there were about 16 of them that were in the, in the non-gated communities.
Well, there's really no way to actually tell. It could be five minutes, it could be five hours, because each situation is going to be dependent on what was stolen, what kind of items were recovered, what kind of items had purpose that we could follow through for evidentiary reasons to investigate. So, you know, it's hard for me to be able to put a number on how many man-hours for each one of those. More than likely, none of them, I can't speak for all of them without looking at each general case, but more than likely, none of them came to fruition for an investigative purpose, because we had no idea what exactly was stolen.
So we couldn't catch anybody at the end of the day? And then we are facing, well, how do you measure a public purpose of deterrence when you don't know whether there's ever going to be a need for deterrence, because, my golly, everybody might just stop committing crime tomorrow? Or it might become even more rampant, in which case, golly, we would all like to have had hardened mailboxes throughout the entire community, because there's a crime spree. It's an, it's an interesting question. Do we mainly accomplish private purposes? Are we trying to, is our primary focus to get people their mail? I don't think our primary purpose at all, I don't think any of us intend to help people get their mail. Are we intending for people to get their mail safely? Well, now we've changed the question, and we've kind of bifurcated it, and it's like, well, there's mail delivery, and then there's safe mail delivery. Which one, is safe mail delivery a, a public purpose, or is that a private purpose? Well, the first question I, I could have answered and said, "Well, we don't need to pay for these things." The second question, where we start talking about safety and the safe delivery of mail, that is our responsibility. That's one of the primary purposes of state and local government for the state of Texas, is to provide safe enjoyment of the, of the goals of, that we have as Americans, and the liberties that we're able to enjoy. Because if we don't have safety in the enjoyment of our liberties, there is a tension. It's great to have freedom, but it's much better to have freedom that is, that is enjoyed in safety. So, so I just wanted to apologize, Pete, because I read that wrong. I said that the primary, that the main purpose had to be a government purpose. The main purpose cannot be a private purpose. So, so that it's like, there can be exceptions to this, to the city getting a benefit, but if this is mainly for somebody else's benefit, then we can't do it. But if there is a more than, with exceptions, benefit to the city, that predominantly is satisfied, because the city is getting more than just an exceptional or just a variance benefit. And that's, that's for y'all to decide how you're going to balance that on top of the head of a pin.
So, the reason to me this discussion is very important is, I, I'm hearing what Alderman Powers is saying, and I think he makes a valid point. We have to be, if we're going to vote for this and approve this, we have to be very, very clear on our logic, and to be able to articulate our logic to our community. And if, if, if what we're saying is the public, if, so, if the, the benefit that I'm getting this is a citizen of Chavino Park, is now my police can focus on other things versus spending a lot of time on mailboxes, if my citizens, if this reduces crime that would carry over into other areas, that would benefit me as well. So, those would be the benefits that, that I would see. And then the question is, is the funds that we would spend, is, is that an equitable amount of money to spend for those benefits?
Okay. Back to Buddy?
I mean, we can be here all night, but we're going to, I mean, Lee, Alderman Powers has a very good point, and so does Pete. It does serve a public purpose. I think it does benefit the citizens of our community, and this is something that's not going to go away. It's going to continue out there. I think that the postal service, by them, replacing the boxes in the estates, only because there's not an HOA, is, is indifferent from Chavino Creek. It's only that the HOA has been handed the responsibility of facilitating as an HOA. The postal, the mailboxes belong to the US Postal Service, they control the mailboxes. They, the city owns the property.
Conrad?
So, you know, we've spent a long time on this, but if I'm living in, in Chavino Creek, and I hear Pete talking, and we talking about the fence on Northwest Military, you know, that, that's, that's already been cracked open, as far as spending a little bit of money. The other part of the issue, hey, move to Chavino and get your mail stolen. That's a look, right? It's a look like the fence. It's not physical, but it's there. So, as far as I'm concerned, that, that's sort of already been broken open, as far as the city's spending some money on this. I would recommend that Dan or somebody write a letter to the post office to try to get some money back on that deal, on the back end. At least we're trying to do that. But if you're living over there at Chavino Creek, and you just hear what we said up here, well, the money's been spent over there on the fence, why can't you spend? why can't you spend a little bit over here? That, that argument's already there and broken open.
And we will certainly send those letters in whichever side the vote ultimately comes down. Buddy, your motion was for an appropriate amount. We need to clarify an appropriate amount.
Sure. After this discussion, I'd like to amend my motion that, that we spend twenty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars on the purchase of the mailboxes.
Okay, Maggie, do you consent to that amendment? Okay, so that, what that would mean, that if, that we will spend up to twenty-seven thousand. If the price goes up, that the HOA will bear a hundred percent of the additional cost. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Lee.
I come up with three points, listening to the rest of the council. Good, good points. The fact that Mr. Hill talked at length about the wall and the vagaries of back and forth, it was a precedent. Otherwise, we wouldn't be talking about it. We're setting a precedent to enact. Whatever way we go, we're setting a precedent. And my concern is, well, that goes to the third one, that we're unsure about whether or not we're going to be setting a precedent, come, come back and bite us with the other citizens. I find personally I lack enough legal assurances that what we're doing is proper on its face because of what's riding up there, a public person. I, I, I don't see the public going into that box. I see private individuals who have homes in that area going in there. I, I, I can see both sides of this argument. I could make both sides of this argument. I'm speaking to the future of vulnerability of this council and the citizens' money. But the secondary thing that I'd like to point out is, we, we saw a presentation showing lights with cameras and LPRs, et cetera, et cetera. None of that was discussed as an intermediary or a possible solution for this. The cheapest mailbox in the world with a, with a bobby pin type lock would be protected if you've got enough lights and cameras on it. Nobody's going to go up there and mess with it. And it's, it can be utilized for watching out for speeders, burglars, et cetera, et cetera, and not just the primary purpose of watching a mailbox. I would have liked to have seen that discussed a little more fully, along with costs and secondary or ancillary purpose to it.
And Lee, you, you always have that opportunity to make that as the primary motion, to replace the motion that is on the table. If you get a second, then we can discuss that as the primary motion, because it takes precedent as the primary motion. If you, if you make the motion to replace the existing motion and you get a second, then it becomes the primary motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we replace-
Use your mic.
That we replace the first motion with a research into other methods, as laid out by the police chief, an acknowledged expert in security and safety in our community, which may have ancillary types of benefits at a different cost point before we make a decision on the original motion.
Okay, I, I would request that you also include a due date, that it comes back to council so that this doesn't drag out into-
Thank you for that too, Mr. Mayor. I think sixty days should be more than enough time to come up with all this, considering all the other things coming up this summer.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, now, we're, we're open for discussion on the second motion, which is to replace the mailbox consideration with security mechanisms as an alternative, but without any timeframe for completion of the security methods and, or the ultimate approval of the security methods. Okay, we're open for discussion. Pete.
So, one of the things that the chief said that concerned me in his presentation is he said, if you replace these locks with a better lock, that the thieves out there are getting smarter. And what they're, they see it as a challenge to how to, how to re-enter it. So, it's back to where I was originally, and the reason that I did second this motion is because I still have this hanging cloud over me that says, are you, are you solving the problem? Are you solving the symptom? And is putting new mailboxes out there, the, are we fixing a symptom? Or are we actually fixing the problem by, by doing this? So, that's, that's my question.
Yeah, coming, coming back off of that, Bill, I'd like a clarification again. Are they replacing the locks in Chavano Creek or not? They're replacing the mailboxes in the estates. Are they replacing the locks in the-
No, no, no.
They're not doing anything-
They're replacing the locks in Bentley Manor because they have a newer style mailbox that the locks are easily replaced. With the old style mailboxes, you can't replace the locks. So, if you install a new s- style mailbox, implied in that is you can upgrade your locks at a minimal cost. So, I'm not an expert on this, but you know, if you put a lock in there and somehow that's defeated, you can probably upgrade it to a different lock later on. And I would only just remind you that the current motion, the first motion that was originally, was really only focused on eight mailboxes. Now, you're talking sixty-six mailboxes at two thousand dollars each, and that's a very significant difference.
Bill, when you say we did a quantum leap to sixty-six, aren't these cluster boxes? Isn't a mailbox consisting of multiple mailboxes?
Yeah, there's six, I think, was that right, Chief? Sixty-six?
Sixty-two.
What?
Sixty-two within the city of Chavano.
There's sixty-two. So, just for example, the scope of this first, the first one was replacing eight of them at a, at either a half or a full, and now it's a full cost. So, again, while you can never be completely foolproof, there is some level of deterrence in, in, in a new mailbox. But if you, I mean, the way you're talking about going is putting radar and lights and, and signage and solar panels and generating on, if you're doing one of those, you're going to be expected to do, I, I'm sure you're going to be expected to do all sixty-six of those.
And that, that goes to what your original motion was. Was that exploring in the estates in Chavano Creek where we have a known problem or where we have a less known problem in Pond Hill, Huntington, Willowood, in Bentley Manor? Or would it be a phased introduction that we take care of where it's hemorrhaging and then we fix the second?
Let me get a clarification on this sixty-six number. Is that sixty-six pedestals?
Sixty-six pedestals.
Sixty-six two pedestals.
Sixty-two pedestals with multiple mailboxes atop each one of them.
That's sixty-two locations.
Okay.
Not necessarily individual pedestals.
Yeah.
And there was a map showing four on one street that were in isolated areas?
Cinnamon Oak, yes.
And where you could have a camera pointing in each direction, two cameras, takes care of four mailboxes, plus speeders, plus burglars?
Well, I asked for, from the company, I asked for images, if they would provide them. The HOA was a hundred percent for it. The company was a hundred percent for it. What I got was one daylight image, because I wanted to see daylight image and nighttime image, just same location. And the image that they did send us was a downward angle image. So, it did not cover any other areas other than proximity of that mailbox.
Yeah, and do you really believe that having a camera is going to deter anybody? Because it's not deterring mailbox, you know, package thieves with people from Zoom cameras, and they don't care. That, that's, that might help catch them, but it's not going to prevent them for the most part. It might have some deterrence.
But, but the number that we're talking about could be scaled back dramatically. Is that a fair statement? Because you, you might only put these in certain locations that are highly vulnerable.
Just an observation from Postmaster and a gate front, Victor, from Postman Victor. He advised me that there were thirteen mailboxes plus three that weren't on his route in Chavano Creek. So, there were eighteen in Chavano Creek. And Buddy drove the estates and told me that there are five in Chavano in the estates. That's twenty-three mailboxes that are not in the gated communities that are on Chavano Park public streets. The secondary issue is, is certainly a very valid issue if it's a problem. But until it's a problem and we have verification that it's a problem, Lee can make his motion however he wants to on whether we're dealing with twenty-three or sixty-two locations in the city.
With the improvement in, in tactics and methodology, I remember several years ago when they came out with these new-fangled catalytic converters, you had to crawl up underneath the car, make a lot of noise with a hand hacksaw. Now, they have a battery-operated thing. You clamp up against it, pull the trigger, and it falls in your lap. Takes less than sixty seconds to remove a catalytic converter, because somebody that works for Makita and DeWalt came up with an instantaneous pipe cutter. We pay for these mailboxes and the Honyaks out there go out to a junkyard and figure out a new way to break into them. And these become obsolete in two years. Do we pay half fees on the next set? I, I think it, this is a thorny problem. My consideration is and shall be future liability of this city council to continually pay for upgrades of anti-theft, and that's not our function. That's the police department's function.
Okay, other comments?
Just a clarification. There's twelve mel-, locations in the estates.
In the estates, yeah.
Twelve.
Not five. There's twelve.
So, it'd be thirty, a total of thirty. Thank you, Bill, for that clarification.
So, just for clarification, Mrs. Mayor, there's two motions on the table right now.
And we're only talking about Lee's motion, because Lee's motion, when he made the motion to amend, it became the primary motion for consideration. If his was to approve, we would have to vote that it becomes the primary motion. And then, at the point that it has become the primary motion, we have to vote on it a second time to approve it. So, now, we're, we're considering whether it would become the primary motion or not.
Sure, because I mean, the original, in your direction, it was going to be two motions, one to keep the mailbox and the security separate, which we did. I mean, I'm, I'm all for the security. I think it needs to be done. The security does need to be done, the lighting and everything else.
Well, and, and so then, then if we, if we approve that motion, it doesn't mean that the first motion is dead. It means that now we're considering this and our captain, or the captain and the chief can come back to us with more information about, well, what do you really think about this? If you have improved security, is improved security more important or less important? Or is it just additional protection to having a hardened mailbox? And that, those are two different questions.
And, and I think that the council needs to consider the vulnerability of the existing mailboxes that are in Chavano Creek in the estates. The postal service has committed to replace the vulnerable mailboxes in the estates. There's no commitment, other than the offer from the HOA, asking for partial funds to take away the vulnerability in Chavano Creek. And I think that has to be the main consideration of this council on whether or not we want to assist in, in erasing that vulnerability by purchasing new mailboxes. And I think that that's something that the council has the means to do tonight. And by authorizing that, and it's secure, and it does something for the citizens in the community of Chavano Creek.
Okay. Conrad.
I just, Chavano Creek came to us and asked us for half to help out, and that's it. And now, we've gone into something that's much more grand, which may help or may not. But I, the ask was pretty simple, and I would suggest we keep it that way. And if it, if it happens, I don't know how many times this has happened, but the break-ins, but if it happens again, then we need to address the lighting situation.
And of course, if the, if the motion to, to substitute fails, Lee, you could always put that back on to a future council agenda. That, that is, it can certainly be reconsidered. Okay, is there any more comments or conversations on the motion to amend? Okay, if there are no more comments on the motion to amend, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye.
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 Okay, the motion fails. We are now back to the primary motion. Do we have any further discussion on the primary motion? Okay?
The primary motion, motion is to pay for all of it.
No, to, to pay for up to the twenty-seven thousand dollar ask and that we would require that, that the HOA pay-
Half of that.
Half of that?
So, we control the contract.
And that we control the contract, and so if it's sixty thousand dollars, they're paying thirty-three. And if it's less than sixty thousand dollars, they're paying half. Or if it's less than fifty-four thousand dollars, that they're paying half.
The quote we have is not that. The quote we have is twenty-seven.
Yeah, whatever that number was.
Twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven.
So, if it's twenty-seven three ninety-seven, we would pay twenty-seven three ninety-seven as long as Chavano Creek paid exactly the same amount. Now, one of the benefits of it going from Chavano Creek to the city of Chavano Park is that sales tax now disappears from the transaction. So, there may be an eight percent discount in the overall contract. Okay. Any other points of clarification that anybody has? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the primary motion as originally stated and is clarified by Buddy, say aye.
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 All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries three to one. Just a second. I've got to make a couple of notes here.
Mayor, can you give clarification, please, on the vote? Was it-
The, the vote was three to one in favor.
And so, where's the, where's-
Pete did not vote.
And what, what did you abstain based on?
He based, I assume that he based on the fact that he's an HOA and that he benefits directly from the decision-making process.
But you participated in the entire discussion.
I wasn't going to call him out, Megan.
I just wanted to make sure we got it correctly recorded.
But that's okay, yes.
So, it means it's a three-two vote.
It means that he voted against the, the thing.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and, and a failure to vote is a vote against. But I didn't need to point that out. Okay, item eight point three, Discussion Action Resolution R twenty twenty-four zero zero six, approving city policy number twenty-five, economic development policy. Megan, this is you and Curtis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll fly through this for you, and it's a lot finer topic. So, this proposal is a policy, economic development policy, and includes two primary parts. Public improvement districts, which is under chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code, and chapter three eighty agreements, which is what the term is. I have on the slides here not state law in big in blue, so you can see the areas that are tightly controlled by state law, and those are not. Because you're going to see immediately, and then you're looking at the packet, that one section three seventy-two is twenty-eight pages under state law, and it's nice three pages of chapter three eighty under state law. So, one is tightly controlled, one is loose, loose control by the state. But I'll point out that the policy allows a developer to submit both at the same time, and the council has the discretion to consider them together or separately. So, the key highlights of a public improvement district. The purpose of it is to help fund the building of the infrastructure within a PID. So, it's not to build the businesses themselves, but all the public amenities and the infrastructure around it. It's basically a petition by the property owners to create a district that assesses an additional ad valorem tax on their properties. So, it is not any burdening of any other property owners in the city with extra taxation or expenditure of monies. PID districts have, they have taxing and bond issuance authorities, and it's governed by a PID administrator with a PID advisory board, which is typically composed of, you know, fifty percent city, fifty percent petitioner. But there's representation of both those parties. I put, I highlighted their PID administrator because every single legal and financial advisor we talked to recommended that be a third-party professional that you hired, although you could have it be the city manager or staff could do, take that role. There's, under the state law, there's a reporting to the city that the PID has to provide. The PID establishing it, again, is tightly controlled by state law, but the city council has authority to establish additional requirements. There are two types of PIDs. There are capital PIDs and operational maintenance PIDs. Under capital PIDs, there's two ways the developer gets reimbursement. So, a reimbursement PID, the developer pays upfront, expends the money, and over time, the assessments come in and pay them back. A bonded PID is the city would issue a bond for the construction, and then the bond is repaid over time from the assessments. The city would issue the bond, although the, the funds would be handled in a separate fund that the PID would be, the advisory board would help control. An operational maintenance is funds, ongoing enhancement, and public improvements in the PID. And note that you can combine those two together, those two types of PIDs. Here's where we get away from state law within the PIDs. We, in our policy, we have guidance to petitioners. So, number one, we say that capital PIDs are only for commercial developments or mixed-use developments with significant non-residential- So number one, we say that capital PIDs are only for commercial developments or mixed-use developments with significant non-residential. Under state law, there's nothing that says you can't do a residential PID. In fact, many PIDs are residential. But all the undeveloped land in the city, we won't, we're telling the business community, we want to keep this primarily commercial focus. Then we have A through F, we have some guidance. I just put a couple of three here that we are giving further guidance to the community. Generate economic benefits to the city consistent with the city's town plan. Meet the community te- needs, sales tax generating developments, commercial development compatible with nearby residential communities. Protect and reserve the rural community amenities and features that look at the field of Hill Country. These are not found in state law, but it's guidance we're giving to the business community, what we're looking for with PIDs. In one of your attachments, there's a lot of acronyms, and it's pretty complex, and I tried to lay it out here simple, what the PID process looks like, and a lot of state laws in this, in these steps. You have the preliminary phase, where it's mainly developer and staff involved. The developer executes a professional service agreement for the, all the third-party consultants that you see through later on throughout the chain. The developer pays the initial PID capital costs. I highlight that that thirty thousand dollars, significant amount of money, because in the steps, you see that there's market, there can be market studies. There's financial advisors, there can be bond councils if there's issuance of bonds. And the staff established a separate fund to account for all the PID monies. Then we move on to the plan of finance phase. That's where the PID administrator, if it was a third-party or a staff, get involved along with the financial advisors with the developer and the staff. That's where a financial plan is drawn up, feasibility analysis, conducted bond projections are done. And a preliminary service and assessment plans, which is the requirements of state law, and those annual reports are first drawn up and getting ready to present to city council. Then we move on to that phase two with the governmental approval. That was the city council and all the legal teams of both sides start really involved. PID petition is officially submitted to the city. The city council has public hearings on the resolution adopting the PID. Notice and public hearings and proposed levying assessments as a part of the PID. And the city council will dever- de- consider any additional development agreements or possible bond issuances if that was included. And then finally, you have that third, if it is a po- a bond is issued with the PID, then you get an underwriters, appraisers, markets, consultants, and bond councils involved. You have an appraisal and market studies done, and the bond issuance is completed. Now moving to chapter three eighty, the mu- this has a lot less restrictions or requirements of state law. But the purpose of a chapter three eighty agreement is very simple, to provide, and broad, to provide a grant or loan of city funds or services or tax abatement to promote economic development. These are negotiations on the incentives between the city and developer occur on a case-by-case basis. And the city council has very broad authority to establish requirements and negotiate those agreements. So here, this, we're out of state law. This is just what staff has proposed, looking at other cities, and, and this has all been reviewed by attorneys, but key provisions in our proposed policy. We wrote, and their preference is given the projects that bring new wealth to the community by attracting new business and development, or by expanding existing developments, rather than an existing business in the city, hey, comes to the city, I, um, please come, I have a three-eighty agreement so I can get some of my sales tax back or something. No, we're, we give priority to new development coming to the city. And we all come out flat out and say, no applicant proposing up fund contributions from city funds shall be considered. Only refunding a portion of the revenues received by the city. So a petition, uh, application that come in for a hundred thousand dollars from the city, they, only if the business generated a hundred thousand dollars of sales tax, could they get fifty thousand dollars back. There would be no direct check given from the city. Key provisions in the proposed policy, uh, we have the proposed projects should be mixed-use or commercial again, emphasizing this undeveloped land in the city, that's where we, uh, want to emphasize the business community. It makes unique or unequal contributions, development of the city, financial magnitude, significance of the community, architecture, landscaping, enhance the city's fiscal ability to provide high-quality municipal services, enhance the city's public infrastructure, sidewalks, trails, gateways, drainage, this is all guidance that we give to the business community when they're, uh, doing it, considering the chapter three eighty agreement. And the application requirements, we tell the businesses that we want to provide to the city council when they're considering this, that we want to have a timetable and a list of improvements that are gonna be part of the agreement. Details on the kinds and the amount of revenues that the development is going to generate. Proposed duration and dollar amounts that are being sought under this agreement, you know, specifics. Provide benchmarks for measuring whether the applicant would be meeting the agreement's requirements down the track after you approve it. Provide for cancellation agreement if the business fails to be compliant with the agreement, and allow the city to audit it. And any other provisions, city council shall deem appropriate. It's very left wide open. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Curtis. Megan, do you have anything that you'd like to add before we open it up for a motion from council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, do we have a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-four zero zero six, approving city policy number twenty-five, economic development policy?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Conrad, we have a second from Lee. We're now open for discussion. There be, oh, Conrad.
Just a quick question. Curtis, I don't know if you got into it very much, but the, uh, the bonds that are issued, are they required to be revenue or geo-bond?
Uh, PIDs can do, I don't pretend to know every single bond type that you can do in state law, but they can do, I know general obligation bonds. They can do special revenue bonds, they can do refunding bonds. So they have pretty bo- broad bond authority. And also, I'll point out, there's some good things that came from the attorneys in the language, like callouts, like explicitly, if the city issues the bonds, and if it rose above it, so we lost our tax exempt, the PID actually has to recompensate the city for that loss. So there's protections in there written that came from the attorneys that are really good.
Yeah, and the city doesn't have to issue a general obligation bond for the PID. So it can be a special district, and the special district is fully responsible, and, which means there's no secondary liability against the taxpayers of Chavano Park. Okay, um, is there any further discussion? If there's not any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, brings us to item number eight point four, discussion action, ordinance O twenty twenty-four zero zero three, amending chapter twenty taxation to establish a hotel occupancy tax and adding previously approved over age sixty-five tax exemption. Curtis?
All right, thank you again, Mayor and Council. I'll fly through this as well. So the key highlights in this ordinance, all cities can enact a, a hotel occupancy tax, shorthand is hot tax, under chapter one fifty-six of the Texas code. Chavano Park is eligible to adopt a rate of the seven percent. I just add that because there is a maximum total tax that can occur in any jurisdiction, came from the attorneys, that seven percent is what we're eligible. There, I'll be flat out, there are currently no premises in the city today that meet the definition for hotel under the Texas tax code. But in order to use a hot tax as an economic incentive, the city has to establish a tax by ordinance. So I'll just run through the expenditures, even though this city is projected to gain no revenues from this, and this tax would actually not go on any premises within the city once passed. But to run through the expenditures, if you do get hot tax revenue, the TML has two criteria. One, every expenditure must directly enhance, promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. All right, pretty broad. Then there's criteria two, I love this, now there's nine sub-criteria, it's clearly established by state law. I won't run through all these, but you can see where there could be some difficulty in finding in our, in our budget today, common expenditures, you know, promoting arts, historical restorations, preservation programs, transportation systems for tourists, signage directing tourists to sites and attractions. So expending the money directly ourself, if we were to get it, might be difficult. But like I said, it's a tool on our tool belt, uh, if we're gonna, use it as an economic incentive. And lastly, we added, while we were working in this chapter, we added a, proposed adding an over sixty-five tax freeze statement, just for historical and transparency purposes. If you go to our code today and you search tax freeze, it is zero results. So we propose adding the voters of the city Chavano Park approved an over sixty-five years of age ta- ad valorem tax freeze in two thousand and four. That's a simple, so when you search it after this, you'll actually see, oh, well, there is an over sixty-five tax freeze.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to approve ordinance O twenty twenty-four zero zero three, amending chapter thirty taxation to establish a hotel occupancy tax, adding the previously approved over age sixty-five tax exemption as a first reading?
So moved.
We have a motion from Maggie, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Buddy. Is there any discussion?
Have a question?
Yes, thank you.
All right, does, uh, passing this, does this increase our ability to, uh, to get the hotel that we're looking at? We've already got this in place, we don't have to go back and do it. I mean, what are our possibilities of getting that boutique hotel? I mean, this, this really would increase. I mean, it's already there, we don't have to worry about it. The hotel would make us more amenable to-
Good question. Usually, the hotels to get them, they're gonna want economic incentives. And one of the primary ones they do is, they will, I don't know how to say this, but they will be the recipient of the hotel occupancy taxes for a number of years, and that's an incentive. And then they know how to spend them, and they administer it that way. So yes. Because if, if we didn't do it, then that would be a problem.
And, and nobody would get the money.
And, right, that's, that would not be good.
Okay, uh, we have a motion, a second. There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five oh. Item number eight point five, discussion action, future guidance. Ordinance O twenty twenty-four zero zero four, amending chapter thirty-six, article Roman number five, Board of Adjustment and Resolution Amending Policy Number Eighteen, Board of Adjustment. Bill?
The policy was last amended in, uh, January two thousand and twenty-two. There's two things that occurred that tell us that we need to amend the, the policy and the ordinance. Well, number one is, we had some Board of Adjustment, uh, hearings, in which we said we need to clarify a couple of things. The other thing is, when we were doing, uh, our fee review and, uh, fee schedule review, it became apparent that our, uh, fees, we were collecting, were far over, uh, far, were way, significantly under what were actually the costs were. And then as part of that discussion, they're like, well, are there ways in which we can reduce the number of hearings that we have? Now, just to remind you, we did increase the, the fees for Bor- Board of Adjustment variance hearing, special exceptions, and junk, you know, all those, uh, boards. But they're still not gonna cover all the costs. But the question still remains, are there certain things that we can do to reduce the number of hearings that go? Okay, so we started looking at this with, we started working with the, with, uh, Dan's attorney, uh, planners. And we actually proposed a Board of Adjustment policy. And that became apparent that if you do the policy, you have to make the ordinance consistent. And then when we looked at the policy considerations, we're like, okay, wow, this is not gonna be passed in one hearing. There's a lot of complications associated with this. We probably need to introduce the topic to city council, but have them direct the Board of Adjustments to take a holistic review of the Board of Adjustment ordinance and the policy. And that, uh, as part of that, we would also look at, are there other zoning, um, areas in which we can modify our, our zoning criteria, or say setbacks, or restrictions, so that we potentially can reduce the number of special hearings or, uh, variance requests? So, in preparation for that, we did draft a policy. I, I included it in your packet, but I'm not gonna discuss it. And then, um, because part of the issue with that is getting the eight criteria right, or nine, or ten, and making sure that's consistent with our ordinance. The, the other thing was, um, the met, the, uh, planning coordination meetings with the planner said, hey, here's some things that you can consider amending your ordinance that will not give the city administrative variance authority, but is similar to that. For example, if, if a property that has a current rear setback at thirty feet, if it, it butts a green belt, you could make a zoning change to say that it's gonna be tw- it, if it's, if it's twenty, if it's got a green belt, then that variance is twenty-five feet. You could still keep the special exception to fifty percent. But there's a lot of different possibilities for this. This needs to be flushed out at, uh, with the Board of Adjustments. And so, uh, I included that memo for consideration purposes to show you. If you, if you read through that, I'm not gonna go through all those considerations. But what we're asking the city council to do is, is to direct the P and Z to review this, come back with recommendations for city council to approve. And it would be ordinance standards without special exceptions, and then amendment to the policy and the ordinance to make sure we're clear.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. Uh, do we have a motion to direct the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the, to review chapter thirty-six zoning ordinance and to provide recommendations back to the city council for considerations that would allow certain variations to ordinance standards without specific approval by the Board of Adjustments and amendments to chapter thirty-six, article Roman number five, Board of Adjustment variance section, to consider additional special exceptions? We have a motion from Lee. We have a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five oh. Item number eight point six, discussion, update on town plan, four-person work group and resident, feedback prior to upcoming budget development process. Bill?
The two thousand and twenty-three town plan identified twen- uh, fifty-eight recommendations for consideration to achieve our vision of being a premier city in Perry County. Obviously, we have limited resources, both in money and time, so we probably need to prioritize that, and that's something that we've all talked about throughout the whole process. In November of twenty-three, council directed a four ma- uh, person work group be established to provide uh, city council guidance on how to best prioritize and execute the recommendations. Uh, you guys designated the mayor and I as the two primaries, and we were to select, uh, two, um, members of that, uh, working group, which Alderman, Miller, and Kugendahl were the other two selected. I will tell you that, uh, we had a meeting, uh, of our work group, and we've talked about the framework for how we're going to organize this. The key is, is to get feedback from the residents and, uh, that's useful to the city council during the budget process, that we can say, what are we gonna do this year? What are we gonna defer next year? What do we need to do this year to set the conditions for next year? But we do that informed, based upon some feedback from the residents. And so in our internal group, you know, in, in the, in the staff summary that you got, we talked about selecting some key leaders and residents for feedback, doing some, giving them some homework to look at the town plan and, and rack and stack those, um, fifty-eight recommendations to get feedback from them, and then to, um, submit that feedback to city council. In our working group, we, uh, we have agreed that we're going to select twenty-five residents and citizens of the city as a representation, as a representative group of all areas of the Chavano Park, as well as age demographics associated with that. And if we probably take, uh, volunteers, people that have proven to be volunteers before might be familiar with the, uh, the process. And so we would take those twenty-five people, in which, uh, city council, you will have an opportunity to make recommendations to who some of those individuals might be. But twenty-five was the number picked because we thought we could create five working groups, of five ma- uh, five-person working groups. So those become manageable sub-working groups, and we could get feedback from them, and they could meet together, and you're not trying to get twenty people together, or ten people. Five people's a lot easier to get together, and that they could come up, they could elect a, a cheerleader, and that they, one person could do all the work, you'll fight with input from four. Three or four people could do it, but you're gonna have a group which, which they agree upon recommendations that'll come to city council. So we'll probably use, lean heavily on planning and zoning, uh, current, uh, members of different, uh, boards and committees, as well as homeowners associations and demographics of the, uh, of the different city. And so in our mind, we haven't selected those people, but we probably have somewhere between eighteen and twenty of them figured out. That allows Aldermen who are not on the, uh, on this working group, um, Alderman Alaman, um, Maggie, you and Lee, you could submit names for consideration. That'll come to the city manager. We'll rack and stack them to make sure we're not leaving at any area, and we'll form that group, and then from there, we'll uh, finalize how we're gonna actually inform them, how we get their feedback, how we do working groups, and when we do. Somewhere in the May-June timeframe, we should have pretty good input from them that we'll be able to use in our, our working groups and our budget workshops.
Okay, uh, does anybody have any questions for Bill concerning how that's gonna move forward? Uh, so what, we're looking for council members, and that includes Pete and Conrad, to also submit names to, uh, to Bill, so that we can take all those names and put them through the blender and come up with something that's hopefully tastes right for the community. Okay, uh, this was not an action item. Takes us to item eight point seven, discussion action. Set city manager annual performance and salary review for April. Uh, Bill, you gave us a schedule. This looks very much like the schedule that's previously been provided. Curtis, can you turn to the schedule page? Curtis, can you turn to the schedule page? The only observation is, we're asking that each one of the members of the, of council provide their information back so that it can be compiled by the mayor on a timely basis so that I can actually get it to you before we actually meet the day of the meeting. That, that, you, you guys are great, but I have actually gotten information at 1:00 on the day of the meeting from council members on more than one year
This right here.
Which didn't necessarily, which meant I either disregarded them
No, no.
Or I gave everybody their information late. So I, I would, I would like that, that date to be the date that everybody is really committed to fulfilling, because otherwise
Right there.
Right there. Otherwise, I can't make April the 19th, and, and that's really the important date, is April the 19th. So I need, I need everything from you guys before April the 19th, so that I can get it back to you on April the 19th. Does anybody have any recommended changes to this schedule? It looks very much like the other one, except that the dates have changed because of when the council meeting occurs in April. Okay, that was a non-action item as well. If everybody's fine, we'll go on to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries, it's 9:10.